You are ready. All right. Good evening. It is Monday, December first, two thousand twenty five, and this is a public hearing for proposed ordinance number one oh six dash two thousand twenty five accessory buildings and uses. Present this evening are council members, Mr. Hanam, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Richardson, Ms. Dow, Mr. McCann, and myself, Mary Westfall. Also with us Mayor Frye and Law Director, Mrs. Brining, Mr. Shaw, Chief Miller, Mr. Sanford, and Ms. Smith. Everybody, thank you everybody. We have nobody in the audience right now, so that may be perceived as a good sign that there's not a lot of objection to this. Just for the record, though, the purpose of this meeting is to council requested the Sylvania Municipal Planning Commission to consider proposed ordinance number one oh six two thousand twenty five to amend part eleven of the planning and zoning of the codified ordinances of Sylvania by amending section one one two one point oh seven accessory buildings and uses. The planning commission did review this and had quite a lengthy discussion. The primary focus of this was to allow carports in R two district, in the R two district, and there was some discussion about a special use permit. The planning commission did review it and did vote unanimously to advance this back to council with the consideration of including a permit, a special use permit, and I'm going to turn it over to Law Director, Mrs. Brining, for clarification because it's a little
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Westfall. This one did get a little bit complicated in the recommendation section, and also there was a typographical error in the dimensions. So when it was presented to council, it was just simply as a permitted accessory use. There was a little bit of discussion at council that there would be some preference for this to be handled as a special use permit. So the planning commission agreed with that and recommended that the plan, the special use permit section be amended to allow carports in R twos with a special use permit. So that's what's coming back for the public hearing this evening. Any other questions?
I have one thing. The current, the information, the legislation that's attached is still maybe the old legislation.
Yes, that is.
It's got the old dimensions in it.
Yes, I do have the new, the new one.
Okay.
The typo was, the width was ten feet rather than eighteen feet.
So since there's no one here in the audience, it means there's not a lot of widespread community concern, but any questions, comments, pros, cons from?
This was motivated by a single request, right?
Correct.
And?
And his, he did file his application for his specific carport, which has been also referred to the planning commission, and that public hearing is in January.
Okay, and that's for a special use?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
So this is just?
Well, yeah, I, I think I would, I think it's a good idea, rather than adopting regulations governing carports, I think. I don't feel it's so, so much of a burden on council that we can't consider each of these independently, decide if they're appropriate in the neighborhood that they're in, and also find out whether neighbor, how, how their neighbors, you know, give their neighbors an opportunity to come.
One of the things that came up at the planning commission, and I have not had a chance to go out there and look at it yet, but that this particular house is located at like the end of a cul-de-sac and seems to be in a less obtrusive location. So I do think the special use permit could come in handy if we have somebody who's, you know, in a more highly visible area that creates concern.
Well, my, my my default is to put to work on council rather than on on our zoning people and, and planning people to make those calls. I mean, the calls are ours to make, and in fact, our neighbors, we should be held accountable for those decisions, so. I think this is the way to go, and I'm comfortable with that.
I, I have one more question, Sherry, Mrs. Brining. I meant to look this up, I just didn't get to it this holiday. The carports, is that whole section new in this legislation?
That is all deleted. It's really just added as, I think it's subsection G G, yeah, in the special use set in chapter, in eleven fifty three, so.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, that, none of that, none of that is good anymore.
Okay. Any other comments or discussions?
So I, I have the same, you have, you've already both covered it. The question on the dimensions is because I saw it in the municipal planning, but
Yeah.
so this ordinance that's included in the, for the public hearing tonight will be revised?
Yes, I have the, I have a revised version with including carports as just a special use for you. If council wants to consider it, you can certainly take it and we can put it on the next agenda. That's not an issue either, however, you guys want to proceed.
So with that, I would ask if there, you know, what is the will of council to advance legislation this evening? Are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable.
Is there a motion then to advance legislation on this topic for this evening?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion.
And is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to advance legislation for ordinance number one oh six dash two thousand twenty five. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and this will be advanced to the legislation. So with that, the public hearing is complete, or is there any other business to come before? Public hearing is complete at seven oh nine. Thank you very much.
Welcome to the Sylvania City Council Meeting for December first, two thousand twenty five. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanum?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Murphy? Is excused? Yes, Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Dow?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Six members of city council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. And this evening we'll have the pledge of allegiance led this evening by Mr. Richardson. Please rise if you're able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions to the agenda, I don't have anything, but I think Mrs. Westfall, you have something to add to the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to add ordinance number one oh six dash two thousand twenty five. Based on the public hearing this evening, we'd like to have that added to the agenda.
We'll call that agenda item number five A. Anything else, Mrs. Westfall?
And that's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other members of council, anything they want to add to the agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
There you are, Mr. Shaw. People are moving their heads around, sorry, Ms. Brown.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a, uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion, motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, moving on to approval for the council meeting minutes from the council meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the meeting minutes for the Sylvania City Council Meeting held on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty five as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the council meeting minutes from November seventeenth, two thousand twenty five's meeting as submitted, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried and the meeting minutes from council meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty five is approved. Moving on to agenda item number five A, the report from the public hearing held this evening at seven o'clock, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we had a ci- uh, city council meeting this evening at seven, I'm sorry, a public hearing at seven P M. For proposed ordinance number one oh six dash two thousand twenty five accessory buildings and uses. Um, present were council members, Hanum, Hanson. Richardson, McCann, Stow, and myself, Mrs. Westfall, and from administration we had Mr. Mayor, Mayor Frye, Ms. Bryning, Mr. Shaw. Chief Miller, Mr. Sanford, and Ms. Smith. We did not have any general public in attendance here, so we had a nice discussion among council members. This was an issue that was, uh, referred to the Municipal Planning Commission for, uh, review and for consideration. The focus of this was to, um, primarily to allow carports in the R two district. After some discussion, uh, there had been, uh, the, this planning commission recommended that we have these established as special use permits. And so that was the recommendation from the planning commission. Council members had a few questions that were addressed. Mr. Hanson moved that we advance legislation this evening, Mr. Hanum seconded and that motion carried. So this evening we would like to advance legislation for ordinance number one oh six dash two thousand twenty five.
Great, thank you very much. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Westfall? Hearing none, we have ordinance one oh six, two thousand twenty five for consideration, Mr. Hanum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of ordinance number one oh six dash twenty twenty five, I'll read by title only. Amending part eleven, planning and zoning code of Sylvania codified ordinances nineteen seventy nine as amended by amending section eleven fifty three point oh two, special uses. And I move adoption of ordinance number one oh six dash twenty twenty five as an emergency measure.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, ordinance number one oh six, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, and ordinance one oh six, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number six, proposed ordinance one thirty two, two thousand twenty five, Ms. Bryning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, this is in, um, every two years we have to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Lucas County Children's Services and other law enforcement agencies just to, um, put in writing how we are going to handle the, how the, our police division is going to handle the child abuse and neglect cases. We last did this in twenty twenty three, so this is just the, um, every two year update. Nothing significant has changed and, um, the chief and I have discussed it, we both recommend its approval.
Chief, you're comfortable with this, uh, as submitted?
Yes, I am.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Bryning or Chief Miller? Hearing none, we have ordinance one thirty two, two thousand twenty five for consideration, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number one thirty two dash two thousand twenty five, I'll read by title only. Authorizing the Chief of Police of the City of Sylvania, Ohio to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Lucas County Children's Services and community partners to address child abuse and neglect cases, I move passage of ordinance number one thirty two, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number one thirty two, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carried, thank you very much, and ordinance one thirty two, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to a, agenda item number seven, we have proposed ordinance one thirty three, two thousand twenty five, Ms. Bryning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, this is to replace the full-time secretary in the prosecutor's office who first started working for Carl Dorgas in the eighties, so she's been not necessarily a city employee for all those years, but she's been around for a lot of years and has been a great help and has an amazing amount of, um, institutional knowledge. But she is retiring at the end of the year and so we need to fill, or I'm sorry, the end of January, um, is her official retirement date. But her last day of work is December thirty, or end of December. So in order to get somebody in and trained prior to her being off, um, we were just like, just requesting, uh, two month overlap of, for two secret, full-time secretaries in the prosecutor's office.
So effectively this is just a bridge to, uh,
Correct, yep.
Provide some, there's some connection between the, the next person and the, and the individual, the lady who's retiring.
Correct.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Bryning?
Ms. Bryning, we've already identified, I assume start, since it starts tomorrow, we've already identified, uh,
Yes, she is not starting until next week, um, we weren't sure when her official start date, um, and she's still doing the background check and drug, um, drug testing that's required, but.
This is somebody new then.
Um, yeah, I'm new to, well, she was a former city employee, um, or she worked in the court, Kristen Music is her name, Jason Music's wife. So she was, worked in the court, um, wants to come back, very thankful to have her.
Other questions from, from Ms. Bryning? Hearing none, we have ordinance number one thirty three, two thousand twenty five for consideration, Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce by title only, ordinance number one thirty three dash twenty twenty five. Revising the administrative departmental and divisional organization of the city and the codified ordinances thereof by amending Sylvania codified ordinance section one thirty one dot oh one. Department of Law Director Division of Prosecution by adding a second full-time secretary two position from December second, twenty twenty five through January thirty one, twenty twenty six. At which time said second full-time secretary two position shall be eliminated. I move for passage of ordinance number one thirty three dash twenty twenty five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one thirty three, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, all, all opposed? Motion carried and ordinance one thirty three, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number eight, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of council, uh, in front of you tonight I have a busy, uh, piece of legislation requiring three actions on one particular project. This is our Brent, Maine and Haroon, uh, Brenton, Maine and Holland, Sylvania roundabout project. If you recall, earlier this year, uh, we requested council's authorization to pursue a highway safety improvement program, safety funds of which we were successful to do. We've kind of been working through our process to do scope and fee negotiations with our selected consultant through our letter of interest process and we are ready to get started on the project. So in front of you are three pieces, I'll step through, uh, maybe one of them as we go and then take a temperature check and see if anybody's got any questions. But our first one is pretty standard boilerplate, we've done several local let project agreements with ODOT uh, on past projects, but it is the, um, local public agency agreement with them. It outlines what the specific relationship is with ODOT and the city, in this particular case is the LPA. Uh, talking about funding participations, project development, environmental commitments that have to be met, how right-of-way needs to be acquired for the project and so on. So, uh, we've seen this in front of our council many times on others, other ODOT, uh, projects that are local let. And so that's what ordinance, uh, one thirty four dash two thousand and twenty five would be, so I'd take a pause there and answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Shaw?
I've seen disagreement before.
Hearing none, we have ordinance number one thirty four, two thousand twenty five for consideration, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number one thirty four, two thousand and twenty five, I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation on behalf of the City of Sylvania for the Brent, Maine, Holland, Sylvania roundabout project, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number one thirty four, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried and ordinance one thirty four, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure. And, and, and Mr. Shaw, if you would, just, um, remind council when we talk about a local let project, why this one is being handled by the city and not by the state?
Sure, I'd be happy to. About all projects that involve municipalities like us, small me, City of Toledo, uh, Perrysburg, you kind of name it. Ninety-nine point eight percent of those projects are, are, um, local let, meaning you can get through more projects. You can get more grant funding available to you when you are qualified and have completed the training as a local let approved, um, entity like we are. So every four or five years I go through training to make sure I'm qualified to do federally funded projects, uh, to make sure I meet all those requirements. Only in my thirteen years of, uh, public works, um, have I seen a couple of projects that were ODOT let. Ours being U S twenty-three and Monroe out front, I mean, these are, um, or I four seventy-five and twenty A, I four seventy-five and, and Door Street. Multi-million dollar, very large scale, uh, stuff that ODOT is very exceptional at managing. It would be really difficult for Eric and I to manage a thirty million dollar project, uh, from our seats. So, um, those are usually the entities you see, uh, with an ODOT let project.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that explanation, it's hard to comprehend sometimes that something that's
Yeah.
Uh, three million dollars isn't worth the, the effort for ODOT to actually do the work themselves, but they let us, they train us and let us do it. And, and it works better for us and better for the, for the citizens of the state of Ohio because of ODOT's savings in that regard, so.
Absolutely.
Moving on to, uh, agenda item eight C, which is the, uh, design engineering service proposal from D G L, Mr. Shaw.
Okay, now that the, uh, ODOT local, um, local let project agreement is done, we've obviously worked with D G L consulting engineers over the past six to eight weeks on developing a scope and fee proposal based on our letter of interest process. We've obviously selected them and worked forward with this, so this is the, uh, engineering contract to fully design the project to acquire the necessary right-of-way, design the right-of-way to be acquired for it. What's fantastic about safety fund projects, it is the best, uh, pot of money that is available to us from a funding perspective. It's great that this entire contract is covered by ODOT, so how it works during the project development process is the consultant will submit us invoices, we'll take a look at it, make sure the scope of work matches with what's being invoiced, we pass that right on to ODOT and they cover one hundred percent of the bill. So we get that in preliminary design, final design, right-of-way design, uh, we get that in all phases of this project. So that's why safety funding is so great to get because they're so helpful and financially helping us participate in these projects. So, uh, both ODOT and us have looked at this, uh, proposal, um, so, uh, in front of you is their proposal in the amount of three hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars, zero impact to our budget, so it doesn't impact our budget whatsoever. We don't see the money come through us either, all of it just is basically us administering the project and the checks are cut by ODOT.
Questions for Mr. Shaw? Just, um, obviously this is a, this is a large amount of money funded by the state of Ohio, but in addition to the two point three million dollars we received from the state, you, you also plan on, uh, filing for the city to receive O P W C money on this project as well, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, that's correct, uh, we have two point two three, or two, two point three million, like you had mentioned in ODOT funding. The balance of that will have some construction engineering costs, will have some portion of construction that isn't funding, ten percent of that falls on us, but we can use O P W C funds to help supplement that, uh, when the appropriate O P W C funding windows open up, we will apply for this project to help further offset those costs.
So, that's great news, obviously, thank you for that and I, and, um, so you'll see this project, uh, obviously again, uh, before it's all said and done because we, uh, we'll be back in front of you, or Mr. Shaw will be back in front of you asking for authorization to, to work forward on that. So we have ordinance one thirty five, two thousand twenty five, unless there's other questions from council members? We have ordinance one thirty five, two thousand twenty five for consideration, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number one thirty five, two thousand and twenty five, I'll read by title only. Accepting the proposal of D G L Consulting Engineers LLC to provide design engineering services for the Brent, Maine, Holland, Sylvania Road Roundabout Project, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one thirty five, two thousand twenty five as an emergency measure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried and ordinance one thirty five, two thousand twenty five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number eight E, Mr. Shaw, we have the, uh, consultant agreement for D G L.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, as, as, as odd as it may be, this is our final piece here, which is basically ODOT recognizing, hey, the city and D G L consulting engineers are going to work together on this project, but while you two are in the sandbox together, here's how this is going to work, that type of a thing. So this is their recognition of us as the LPA and D G L consulting engineers as the consultant for the project. Uh, there's a consultant agreement that goes with that, that they memorialize on ODOT's end as well. So basically it acknowledges the three hundred eighty-three thousand and five hundred and thirty-one dollars that you guys had just, uh, had in front of you and graciously passed. It also talks about invoicing and how that works, which is what I had just mentioned, um, talks about compensation and how, you know, how both of our, uh, interactions with each other need to comply with Ohio revised, uh, code as well as federal law. So, pretty standard, we do these consultant agreements, especially when there's federal funds in the engineering phases, um, and so that's why it's in front of you tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Hanson.
I don't have a question about the agreement, but just in general on, on roundabouts, as we see this come into play and we're going to see others in the future. I still don't know that everybody is comfortable or, you know, knows how to navigate a roundabout, um. I know Luke, I believe Lucas County Engineer offers training.
They do.
I didn't know if there was a way for us to either promote that or advertise for that, just for residents that, that don't feel comfortable and, and as we start to see more of these, you know, I think it'd be something that, that we could offer.
That's a good point, I think the last time the county engineer had offered some training, they were actually right at the, uh, B and V at, at Brenton, McCord. Um, I think they had done some training right there, I didn't ask Mr. Panouski how many people from Sylvania attended, but for sure I'll reach out and mention to him at any time that they're going to do those types of trainings, if they could bring them closer to Sylvania, that's great, great, thank you.
And, and to that, uh, that, that, Mr. Hanson, if we could advertise whenever in coordination with Mr. Shaw?
Absolutely.
Ms. Smith, we, that would be great, so. Mrs. Smith, we, that would be great, uh so that we can get that out on social media from our side, so our citizens can have the opportunity to be be made aware of it in advance. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we have ordinance one thirty-six two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number one thirty-six two thousand and twenty-five. I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into agreement number four-three-five-four-eight with DGL Consulting Engineers LLC on behalf of the city of Slovenia for the Brent, Maine, Holland, Savannah Road Roundabout Project, and I'll make a motion for passage as an emergency measure.
We have a motion and a second to uh approve ordinance one thirty-six two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carried and ordinance one thirty-six two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number nine. Uh, we have uh Silvertown Water Improvement Reservicing Change Order, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a a great change order to bring in front of you tonight. I know a meeting or so ago, we had one that wasn't so fun on downtown's project, but this one uh obviously to the good for us. Um, this project went exceptionally well. Uh, over on Silvertown Drive, we had thirty-eight hundred feet of eight-inch water water line to replace. Probably some of our older eight-inch that we had in town uh had significant breaks in probably the last four or five years in some different spots. So excellent to get this done. We also resurfaced over ten thousand square feet of asphalt pavement over there. I would mention that it had five speed humps over on that area, which according to our speed hump policy, those do not get put back with the project. So their uh group of residents have already reached out to me acquiring about the petition process and wanting to get those speed humps put back. They are currently working on that, but it is possible I come back to you on this particular uh roadway uh with a petition uh for speed humps. So I just wanted to mention that while I was here, but went very good. We didn't have as much uh base pavement to replace underneath our asphalt. We milled it off. It looked good. That saved us fifty-two thousand dollars. Uh, waterline trench width, uh so when you do these plans, you kind of assume sometimes what contractors can use with their piece of equipment and how big the hole is going to be when they put in that. Uh, this particular contractor used a more narrow bucket for thirty-eight hundred feet, which saved us a lot of of material to replace in the trench, about forty-three thousand dollars of savings there. We had a few more uh asphalt driveways to replace, uh but that kind of was offset more with less concrete too, so o- overall, just a lot of really good things that happened on this project. Ohio exited a fantastic job. I think it's a good finished product. Um, so the change order in front of you tonight is to reduce the contract amount by eighty thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, that's eight point six percent under the bid amount. Um, and this would be our final change order on the project. Uh, happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw, I re- I didn't drive down Silvertown. It's a straight shot, right?
It is a straight shot.
Are there any stop sign, do we have any stop signs along there? How many, how many along?
Just one, one at McGregor. About halfway.
Is there any place else we could put one?
Uh, you could, but what the 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 speed hump petition process is great, because number one, you figure out if people are interested. When we put our speed boxes up, we can see what speeds look like and see if there's any logical places that make sense, but that kind of goes with the whole process. I will say s- uh stop signs are not good speed control measures, because we usually what you see is speeding up and slowing down in between them, so they're, they sign right of way and they're good at that. Um, they kind of sometimes can be variable on speed control, so.
This is speed limit of Silvertown. I remember campaigning there. It is a, it's really straight.
It is. You can, if you were determined, you could for sure get some speeds up there, which I think it's a good candidate to review for sure. Um, but that's why we did this, right? Every twenty, twenty-five years, property owners change hands. You want to make sure everybody on that street is still good with having speed humps and and that's, it's a good, it's a good step to take.
I know we have other speed. Radar, yeah, sign, you know, speed sign thing, maybe we gotta anticipate the the problem and try that. I don't know. It's a it's a problem, yeah.
They've had the petition for a good six weeks now. I'm actually surprised I haven't gotten it back just yet, but um maybe I'll get it here in a couple weeks.
Or people don't really like them. I mean, that doesn't mean that we don't have a, we should, we couldn't try and do something to address.
Other questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing none, we have ordinance one thirty-seven two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number one thirty-seven dash twenty-two-five. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve change order number one final to the city's agreement with Ohio Excavating and Sewer Contractors Corporation for the Silvertown Drive Waterline Improvements and Reservicing Project. Decreasing the contract amount by eighty thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. I move passage of ordinance number one thirty-seven dash twenty-two-five as an emergency measure.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one thirty-seven two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carried and ordinance one thirty-seven two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item.
Joe, I didn't mean to just whine about this. I mean, this is a great project. Sounds to me like our contractor did, did us a, did us a uh a solid here.
He's two for two. Over on Centennial, he had a sanitary sewer job that came in a few thousand under budget. This one's eighty grand under budget. They do ex- excellent work. They're mainly a subdivision contractor. You see him on West Creek and they're over on the Patriot on King Road. Uh, but when they get to come in and do municipal work, it's usually really good for us. They do a good job.
Let them know we appreciate their good work.
For sure.
Absolutely. Moving on to agenda item number ten, we have a letter of interest uh for design engineering services, Mr. Shaw.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in front of you is a request to start our letter of interest process. So just mentioned with the Brent, Maine and Holland, Savannah uh project, we started that same letter of interest process uh six months ago and and worked towards um, you know, securing DGL on that particular project. We're ready to start that exact same thing over at Main Street and Convent. As you might recall, back uh over a year ago now, we uh asked to submit a grant application in T-MACOG Surface Transportation and Block Grant Program for the reconstruction of Main Street right around Convent and also changing that traffic light out uh to a single lane roundabout at that intersection as well. So we were successful with that grant application. Uh, we received five hundred thousand of surface transportation funds. We do have a large uh makeup to do on this and as Mayor uh Fry had alluded to, OPWC is usually our sh- our stopgap to help us bridge that. We will be going heavily after OPWC funds on this particular project. Uh, the deputy director and I have isolated it into a construction year of twenty-nine, which allows us to put our best foot forward and throw every possible point category we can to get as much money for OPWC as we can when that funding windows uh opens up. Um, but that's the funding side of it. We're ready to start the design engineering process. Um, that's a twenty-twenty-six budgeted item. Uh, we'll be back probably sometime in February in front of city council to uh make a recommendation on the award. Uh, but we'd like to get started over the holidays. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Shaw?
I have a quick question. Um, I wonder if you could have any information about distance between roundabouts. Um, this certainly Main Street and Convent is not too far away from Brent, Maine, Holland, Savannah. That, that roundabout. Um, and I don't know if there are any more. It feels like there's quite a few going in there. Just curious if you've got any perspective on distance.
Sure.
Optimal distance between roundabouts.
Sure, signalize intersections. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. It's, it's like um I think it's quarter of a mile is what you're looking for. Um, sometimes your geometry allows that and sometimes it doesn't. Really, when it comes to roundabouts, it's all traffic modeling. So you can put the ants into the model, uh throw the the traffic projections out there and then see based on those movements, how those, how those function. Specifically south of here, where we're talking about Brent and Holland, Savannah and Haroon and Holland, Savannah, as well as Brent and Haroon, that triangle that we're talking about. Um, we have the same consultant that's looking at those. So they're going to plug all that information into their traffic modeling and see how the ants march, so to speak, and make sure we don't have any problems here or there. But there's no real minimum, uh to answer your question, you can have them as close as you need to. Sometimes you may have to add a a dedicated lane if it's a slip lane for one particular direction, but no, there's, there's no minimum when it comes to roundabouts. It's more just on
But I did think at that triangle, there was some consideration for that as well, so that's three kind of backed up pretty quick right there, so.
This one's far enough away from that triangle that you wouldn't have any uh suspected uh issues.
Other questions for Mr. Shaw? Mr. Richardson, since you've done some, uh and Miss Stow hasn't done anything yet in regards to this, are you okay with seating this next to to Miss, Miss Stow? Miss Stow, would you like to uh make this request?
Yes, I think I skipped ahead though.
Agenda item ten.
Oh, this is just a letter, sorry. I would like to move for, hey, that's why I was getting confused here.
No, 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 understood.
I would like to move for accepting the request of authorization uh to begin letters of interest uh solicitation of the design engineering services related to the Main Street and Convent Boulevard Roundabout Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize administration to uh i- i- issue a letter of uh of interest for solicitation for the uh Main Street and Convent Boulevard at Roundabout. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carry. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, we have the Convent Boulevard and Little Road Reservicing Project, Mr. Shaw.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and another uh project that we were successful in securing grant funding on, it's, it's nice to come here with four projects that all had uh successful grant applications with them that shows our strength of securing outside funds to help us with these improvements, but this was a joint um application for OPWC funds with the Lucas County Engineer. Uh, we have great partnership with them. Uh, they ask us every year what streets we have and what streets um they may have and how those fit together for good applications. Uh, this was one of them that they had approached us with. Uh, they had a very strong candidate and we were able to get quite frankly, two, two roads that were not really good candidates on their own, uh to be able to help us get funding with those. Just the traffic counts on Convent and Little are are lower, but when we can partner with the county, it helps us, uh it helps us get some things done and we go back and forth with who can help who. So this is great. Uh, we have an estimated construction cost of seven hundred thirty-seven thousand two hundred forty dollars, of which over a quarter of that will be OPWC fund help, which is great. Um, and the rest of that will be locally funded. So a straight uh two-course mill and fill project. We'll do it over the summer. Uh, the deputy director has it scheduled to advertise um beginning on December twenty-ninth, so in between the holidays, which is okay. Asphalt guys love to get projects on the books early on. Um, we'll be back probably in uh late January or the first part of February to make the project award, but uh this is our request to uh have permission to advertise the project to construction. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hanson.
Uh, just curious, Mr. Shaw, the the scope of work for uh Little Road, um why we're not going all the way to Centennial?
Sure, it's a great question. Uh, we have another project that we have in the books for Centennial and Little's intersection improvements. Uh, we're, we're proposing that to be a roundabout at that intersection as well, but we're going to carry that eastern leg all the way back to this pavement joint that's here. We've got some cleanup to do west of this in terms of right of way and potentially laying out some sidewalks. Uh, but those two projects match with each other in terms of where we're going to stop and start, but that particular project you just mentioned just goes a little further east than normally, so there's no gap. Yep, great question.
What's the timing on the Little Road Centennial?
Twenty-nine.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing none, we have the Convent Boulevard, Little Road Reservicing Project to advertise for bids, Miss Stow.
I would move for authorization to advertise for bids on the Convent Boulevard and Little Road Reservicing Projects.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the clerk of council to authorize uh or advertise for bids for the Convent Boulevard and Little Road Reservicing Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carried and uh the clerk wa- is authorized to uh send out the advertisements for that bid package. Thank you very much. Uh, and Mr. Shaw, thank you very much for for um the efforts there and obviously the, all the funding we're we're receiving for the city's taxpayers. We do appreciate that. And extend our thanks again, as always, to the county uh engineer uh working with us on that particular project.
You bet. Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number twelve, we have uh Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-five, which is reappointing Mr. Snell to the zoning board of appeals for a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Mr. McCann, do you have any concerns about this?
None. Uh, I spoke with Mr. Snell last month and he was willing to re-up for another term. And we're pleased with his service so far and we're glad to have him.
We appreciate his continued service to the city, his willingness to do that, and I also might mention the zoning board of appeals, as as you may recall, uh earlier this year, we asked them to pull double duty where we are uh we created the nuisance abatement board, so they're basically carrying two hats going forward now, so they were uh willing to do that, so we certainly appreciate that, that service to the city by Mr. Snell and and the other members of the zoning board, so. Yeah, are there questions or concerns for members of council regarding this? Hearing none, we have Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-five for consideration, Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I gladly, I would like to introduce by title only Resolution number twenty dash twenty-five. Reappointing Matthew J. Snell to the zoning board of appeals for a term expiring December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight. I move for passage of Resolution number twenty dash twenty-two-five as an emergency measure.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. And Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-five is approved uh as an emergency measure. Again, uh Mr. Snell will be notified and uh you know, we'll, we'll take care of that and send him a thank you uh for his ongoing service to the city. We appreciate that. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, we have uh a letter from um from myself uh reappointing um Kathleen Fisher to the uh municipal planning and uh commission uh for her term expiring uh basically at the end of this year. And the new term would run for January two thousand twenty-six through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-nine. Um, Ms. Fisher, many of you know, uh she's the president of um Anamora State Bank and has done a nice job on the municipal planning and uh architectural review committees, and we appreciate her ongoing service in that regard. Um, so I would ask your uh confirmation of my reappointment for her to continue serving in that regard. Uh, any questions or concerns? Hearing none, we have wor- uh uh Mr. McCann, would you uh make the motion to for this particular uh expression of uh confirmation of my uh my appointment?
Yes, uh I also would like to add that her service has been exemplary on the commission and has been a very good addition to that committee. I move that council confirm the reappointment of Kathleen Fisher to the municipal planning commission for the term commencing on one, one two thousand twenty-six, expiring in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.
We have a motion and a second to approve Kathleen Fisher's uh reappointment to the municipal planning commission for a term from Jan- uh from January first, two thousand twenty-six through Ja- December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, excuse me, two thousand twenty-nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much and uh we certainly appreciate Ms. Fisher's willingness to continue to serve as well and thank you very much for that. Um, moving on to agenda item number four, well, before I go to fourteen, let's talk about are there any committee reports or committee referrals for consideration? Hearing none, we have executive session to discuss pending litigation. So uh um could I have a motion to move in the committee of the whole executive session for the purpose of discussing potential litigation? We have a motion and a second to move into executive session, committee of the hall for uh discussion of potential litigation. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Haydom?
Yes.
Mr. McCann?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Miss Stow?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
The motion is six to zero to uh move in the committee of the whole executive session uh for the purposes of discussing potential litigation. Uh, so we are entering into executive session. Thank you very much. You're all welcome to stay afterwards. There, it's unlike, incredibly unlikely there would be any decisions made during the executive uh session to come out. There's unlike incredibly unlikely there would be any decisions made during the executive session to come out and and have any votes, but you're welcome to stick around if there are any signatures or anything that anybody might need for this purpose, now's the time to come on up if there's anybody here for that purpose. now's the time to come on up if there's anybody here for that purpose. Okay, I'll give the opportunity for Mr. Sanford. Is there anybody out there? Okay. So, city councils returned from committee of the whole executive session to discuss potential litigation. No decisions were made during the during the committee of the whole executive session. No decisions need to be made at this time either. So if there's are there any other items to come before council this evening?